Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco Council Special Meeting and Regular Workshop. The council thanks you for being part of our city government. At special meetings, the council takes formal action on specific items and during the workshops only discusses issues with no formal action taken. Agenda packets are available on the City of Pasco website at www.pasco-wa.gov/agenda. This meeting is also being televised live on PSC TV Channel 191 on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, YouTube channel, and go-to webinar. This and previous council meeting video is available on the city's website. Lastly, the public may submit their comments and/or questions by contacting the city manager, city clerk, or by using the Ask Pasco app. And with that, can I get rule call? Councilmember Brown?
Present.
Opposed?
Present.
Milne?
Present.
Roach?
Present.
Serrano?
Here.
Mayor Protan Maloney?
Present.
And Mayor Barajas? Present. Would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move on to our item four on the agenda, item A, Resolution Number 4304 Bid Award Broadmoor Area Tax Increment Financing Improvements Phase 1A. Director Worley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. I know this is going to come as a shock to you, but I'm going to turn this item over to Maria Serra.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. We are presenting to you a bid award for the first phase of the multi-phase project in the Broadmoor area funded through tax increment financing. This very first phase is for mass grading of the alignments of Road 108 and Sandifer as well as 103, Road 103. We received 12 bids in this project and it was incredibly competitive. We received bids that are much lower than our engineer's estimate. About half of the bids were in the order of the one that we are proposing toward and others were incrementally higher, reaching almost the engineer's estimate. So, the proposed bid award is to Goodman and Melanbacher and it is for $600,000. And we evaluated these bids, we found no irregularities. We tried to analyze why the bid was so much lower than our engineer's estimate. And what we found is that through that group of low bids that were in this lower range, what we noticed was specifically to the two biggest items in our bid form that were related to the actual movement of the dirt. And then the compaction was that there was a clear savings in the unit price for the mass amount of dirt being moved, which we interpret may be related to the understanding of the ease of moving and compacting the sand that we have in this site. So, local knowledge of our type of soil may have been a factor. With that being said, trying to keep this presentation brief, I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for your brevity. Do we have any questions from council? Councilwoman Roach, any questions?
None at this time.
Councilmember Serrano, any questions?
None here, none here, Madam Mayor.
With that, thank you, can I get a motion?
I move to approve Resolution Number 4304, awarding bid number 22377A for the Broadmoor Area Tax Increment Financing TIF Improvements Phase 1A Project to Goodman and Melanbacher Enterprises, Inc. of Kenwood, Washington, and further authorize the interim city manager to execute the contract documents and allowing all necessary budget adjustments.
Does motion, can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilman Milne. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? None opposed, and it passes unanimously, thank you. And with that, we are done with this special meeting. We'll move on to our workshop meeting. With all the housekeeping already done, we will move on to item four on the agenda. Any verbal reports from councilmembers? Councilman Brown?
Just a quick update on... My computer won't start up, so I gotta work it out from what I got. Downtown DPA got together on Friday, if I'm correct, at 4:00, Thursday, Friday? Talk to me here. Thank you, Thursday. I'm not ashamed, I'll get help where I can get it, Thursday. Very, very happy to report that there is unity in the room. There's progress happening with Downtown Pasco. The meeting was very good, I did make my own notes, but it's moving forward right ahead. I believe there's a new chair in place. Believe the treasurer state dis... no, there's a new treasurer, correct? And I'm looking at him, Mr. Thomas there. So, there is progress, there's changes to be made, I think, for long term. It's gonna look really good. So, that was a great meeting, great conversation. And always, thanks for the invite to let us look into what's happening, to come back to report to you all that things are happening and they look real good right now. And I was tough on Downtown and I think they're gonna deliver, it's looking real good. And that's it for my reports, BF Cog, I can't pull it up. But let me tell you, that 10 o'clock meeting is a little rough to get to, but they're very... They're on point with their information, their reports look really good, their budget looks like it's in shape from what I reviewed. Too bad I can't get into great detail because my laptop is giving me a real challenge right now. But that's okay. I think both of those organizations that I was able to attend prior to this meeting is really doing great work and they have the City of Pasco in mind when they do it. So, I'm very proud of them and proud to bring you back the report, thank you.
Thank you. Any other councilmember wish to share? Councilman Milne?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, on Thursday night, I did attend the Ag Hall of Fame and with Adam Lincoln and Mike Gonzalez. Really good presentation. I know the Ag Hall of Fame inductees were Carol Travis, Charlie Danzy, Harold Cox, Mary Belkum. And it was really good to see leaders, people in our community stepping up and helping this community grow. And then, of course, we had the thing with the... I'll let you talk about that, but you did a very good job on that.
Thank you.
So...
I'll share on that one.
Okay.
Councilwoman Roach, Councilmember Serrano, is there anything you wish to share?
Mayor, this is Councilwoman Roach, and I'll just share that I had a really enjoyable time on... On, gosh, was it Friday night? Yes, Friday night with the city staff and recognizing those employees, the standout employees by department, it was wonderful to be in a social setting with everyone.
And I'll offer that I attended the Hanford Area Economic Investment Fund Committee meeting this afternoon. We, as always, have money to lend out to those kind of budding entrepreneurs or more established small businesses that may not have traditional lines of credit. Certainly, don't hesitate to reach out or check our website out and see if you can qualify if you're looking for money to, you know, improve business outside of the Hanford site. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other councilmembers? I'm gonna pick you on the spot. Well, I will share, this Friday, Councilwoman Roach touched a little bit on it. Was the 2022 Employee Banquet, Appreciation Banquet, five employees of the year, correct? Four employees of the year, thank you, that's why I'm looking that way. Thank you. And obviously, the whole staff attended, it was a great, great event, attended by staff. A lot of winners for those gift cards. I think it went well, I think people enjoyed the food, definitely. I don't know about the emcee, but they looked like they had fun. Just want to add, thank you, staff, everyone that's watching, thank you, staff, for all the work you do to keep Pasco running smoothly. And though we have hiccups, it runs smoothly. Thank you again for all your efforts. I do want to add also, I did a tour of the animal shelter last week. I'm pretty sure it was on Wednesday. The conditions of the animal shelter from the first time that I went have been, have improved tremendously. The smell, the condition, it's organized, it's organized. Yes, the building is old, needs to be replaced, we're working on it. But I will share that I did not walk away empty-handed. I pick him up tomorrow. So, yeah, that happened. And with that, we'll move on with the rest of our agenda. We'll move on to item five, Items for Discussion. A, the 2060 and 2163 Housing Program Interlocal Agreements, and I moved ahead on my agenda. Director White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and glad to hear about your new roommate. But in the early to mid 2000s, the state legislature adopted two programs to assist with homeless, the issue of homelessness. One, the 2060 Fund was adopted and focused on capital projects relating to minimizing homelessness. The other Fund 2163 was adopted to assist with providing services to those people affected by homelessness. Both of these funds are administered through an interlocal agreement and they are funded with the total fees, a portion of the total fees that are associated with recording documents at the county level. So, when you record a document, a portion, very small portion goes to both of these funds. The interlocal agreements were, I think the last one was adopted or executed in 2016. It's time to renew those. And Mr. Kyle Sullivan from Benton County Department of Human Services is here to provide counsel with an update on the interlocal agreements and offer to assist counsel with more information or answer any questions.
Thank you. You want to press the button on there? Perfect.
Is that better? Oh, okay. So, I appreciate the opportunity to come and talk with you about these programs. I think Rick did a great job of summarizing them. Again, the capital projects, and I think I had provided the city clerk with just kind of a one-page. I think there's, I think there's a lot of things that I'd like to go over with you, but I know that there's, I don't have a whole lot of time. So, I think one thing I wish I would have done was add my contact information to that, but Rick has that. So, if anyone wants to go a little deeper into the weeds, please feel free to reach out to me and I'd be happy to spend however much time you would like talking about that. I think one thing that I did want to just point out, and I think Rick did a great job of explaining the two differences in the two funds. The 2060 Fund is for capital projects, it's also the Affordable Housing Fund. And you may hear it referenced that way, 2163 is the Homeless Housing Fund, and again geared towards services. We try and develop programs to help fill gaps in the housing system. And so, I think maybe just explaining to you, the last program that we developed was a young adult housing program. And it was based off of conversations that we've, that I had with my friend's place, which is our youth shelter in, serves tri-city area youths, and DCYF or CPS, Child Protective Services. And the problem that they were having, the youth shelter was licensed for under the 17 and younger. So, on their 18th birthday, they aged out of the shelter. Same thing with kids that are in foster care, on their 18th birthday, they age out. Now, they do have, foster care children do have the opportunity to sign themselves back in to complete their education. The concern was oftentimes, they didn't. And so, the gap, the concern and the gap in service was, you know, when you have kids, you know, that, you know, by their legal age, on their 18th birthday, they're considered adults. They're not in a position to be able to navigate the adult world. And so, the program that we developed was a rental subsidy in partnerships with TC Futures and Community and Schools to provide more of the case management side of it. We provided a short-term rental subsidy to allow them to complete their education and develop job skills and those kinds of things. And so, again, that was just an example of the last program that we developed. That was a couple of years ago, it was, well, COVID kinda, it was probably more than that, it was probably more like four years ago. And COVID, the couple of years that we dealt with that kind of blurs thing. I threw some additional funds or programs in there just for your review. Certainly, if you have additional questions about that, please feel free to reach out and talk to me about that, I'd be happy to talk with you. The, we, over the last, well, since March of 2020, my office for both Benton and Franklin County has received a staggering amount of funding to the tune of over $50 million in rental assistance, utility assistance, funding to help. We had, and I included it in here, it's an emergency solutions grant, it was referred to as ESG. It was funding to help get the homeless population off the street to help stop the, prevent the spread of COVID and house them in hotels. And so, I think what I want the council to understand is that we've had so much federal funding over the last couple of years. When somebody comes through my door and they may qualify for different funding sources and they would often qualify for our 2163 Fund, however, we would, we would help them. If they qualified with federal dollars, we would spend the federal dollars first. Those are time limited, those programs will be expiring on June 30th of this year. And so, we still have funding and, but it's a matter of the need. You know, it's the number of applications that we process, we partnered with Goodwill for that and the Tri-City Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. We've had, I've had probably, I don't even, I can't even probably count the number of contracts and contract amendments for federal dollars that I've had over the last couple of years. It's, we've had a lot. And so, we've contracted with the Tri-City Hispanic Chamber of Commerce for education and outreach. Between Benton and Franklin County dollars, we've contracted about $1.2 million to them. They've, they would reach historically marginalized communities to help them with, who maybe have been reluctant to access these kinds of programs. They provided education, assisted with completing applications. There was funding in there to assist with pop-up vaccination clinics. And so, the partnership with them has been great. And so, again, that's a little off-topic of why I came to talk with you, but I did want you to understand that there are, I do have additional funding sources that complement these programs. My intent, getting back to the interlocals that we have before you, typically what we'll do is, is in the fall, I'll meet with the steering committee. Jeff Adams participates in the steering committee for the City of Pasco and he's been great. The information that he brings is always, he's always very vocal. And the reality is, for the 2060 program, it's a weighted representation on the steering committee. The City of Pasco has four representatives, all of the other cities in the county have one representative and the county has one representative. I don't constitute a vote, I just provide technical assistance to the steering committee. But the reality is, is usually the only people that would show up for the steering committee meetings would be Jeff and Keith Johnson, the former county administrator for Franklin County. And they worked great together, it was always, there was never a disagreement on the projects that we would support. An example is the, Pasco Haven was probably the last, it's Bishop, what is it, Skylstad and Skylad? Skill, yeah, is the new name, I still refer to it as Pasco Haven, it's easier for me to say. But the steering committee agreed to provide the purchase, the land purchase price. And so, it was a $127,000, I think it was 127, grant to Catholic charities to purchase the land. And so, again, typically in the fall, the steering committee will meet, we'll talk about a fund balance with them. And then, they give me a recommendation on what they would like to put out in RFP. There have been some years that we've not done anything trying to let the fund grow. It grows, I think it gets about $80,000 a year. And so, it's not really enough to support full projects, but we partner with private developers, with, I think we've partnered with Pasco Housing Authority. And it's the partner to help, the goal obviously is to bring more affordable units on, onto the market because we have such a shortage. But there's not always those projects that are great, that are presented that we can support. And so, I think when we, the last project we had with the Pasco Housing Authority was for, to assist with renovating, they had very old water heaters in 40 of their units. And so, the funding went to replace all of those water heaters. But we'll meet in the, in the fall, identify how much money to RFP, my office will issue the RFP and all of the Franklin County, and so, I do the same thing in Benton County. All the Benton County money stays in Benton County, all the Franklin County money stays in Franklin County. And so, we support projects that would be in, in the county. I don't, I can't recall a project that we've supported that hasn't actually been in the City of Pasco. We just, that's where the population base is, that's where we get the proposals for. And so, then, we usually keep that, the RFP open for about a month. My staff go over the, each application to make sure that it meets the requirements within the 2060 program. And then, we set up a day where we have presentations and the applicants come in and present their projects and the steering committee makes recommendations on which projects to fund. And so, I want to certainly leave you enough time to ask any questions that you might have. But I also wanted to add one thing, and I brought Gloria Caldwell from my office in the event that you had additional questions. We do have our point-in-time count this Thursday. And it's the Commerce, the Department of Commerce determines which day of the year, and they happen to pick January 26th, that we go out and count the homeless population. It's, it's an imperfect count because I think homeless people are resourceful and they're not always where we would think they would be where, so we could count them. And so, but it is at least a starting point. And so, I think everyone that is involved with the PIT locally and with Commerce understands that, you know, it's not 100% accurate. I think the general consensus is that you take that number and times it by three to have a better, better perspective. But I did want to let you know that we do have the PIT count coming up. And so, certainly, if there were any questions that came from that, I wanted Gloria to be here to be able to answer those. So, like I said, I could keep going, but in, to respect your time and in the fact that you all want to get out of here before midnight, I will certainly entertain any questions that you might have.
Thank you, thank you for your presentation. And I was actually gonna wait for Ms. Linas to bring up the point-in-time count, I got those emails. Any questions from council? We do have questions, Councilmember Brown?
Yes, just real quick, this is all wonderful information and the teamwork that's going through. But Mike, is there an ask tonight or are you just giving us a formal report? And I hear that Mayor has some other information that'd be helpful later, but is there an ask tonight or?
I think that if I have to ask, it would be to approve the interlocal agreements. And so, I'm, it's, I'm not able to proceed with the RFP, with the, with the program without, without getting the interlocal signed. Once, once I have, I think I've got one, I'm here tonight to talk with you. I've been up and talked with some of the other cities. I think I have one other city that I'm waiting on. And then, once I get a complete document, I have it, I put it before the Franklin County Board of Commissioners and then, when they sign off, I would distribute a complete packet with all the signatures from all the cities in it and then move forward with a meeting with the steering committee. And so, I think that my ask would be to consider the interlocal agreement, signing the interlocal agreements.
No, that sounds good, thank you.
Mayor Protan Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor Barajas, thank you for the presentation. So, I do have some questions. I would note for my fellow councilmembers that the two ILAs are very different in structure. When we're talking about the, what's it, the 2060 ILA, that has a disproportionate number of Pasco potential representatives on there and it is only an advisory board, to be clear, it's not a decision-making body. So, it can be overruled at any time. The 2163 program is equally weighted between the cities and the county, if I'm reading the ILA correctly. So, that is a very different ILA with different, that maybe doesn't reflect the fact that, you know, City of Pasco makes whatever, 80% of the county's population. And I, and I'd say a disproportionate need for services like these as well. So, I would note that they're very different in structure and I'm not sure I understand why. So, do you have any idea why we ended up in a space where these two are so structured so differently?
You know, I, the, I don't, and I'll be honest with you, the interlocals have been in place. I've been in my position since 2015 and the interlocals have been, been in place prior to that. And I'll be honest, since I, since I came on in my current capacity, our 2060 Steering Committee has always been represented by two people, someone from the county. And even though it's weighted, it's weighted, it's still, and the other cities have not participated. The other, the 2163 interlocal allows for two positions on our balance of state continuum of care. And it's a, it's a part of a larger statewide continuum and representation. And really, it talks in that, those meetings, we hold those meetings quarterly and those are to address housing needs in the, in the community. And, and, and so, I don't, you know, it's, I don't have an answer for you tonight as to why the continuum of care is a two-member representation versus the weighted four for the 2060. But I'll tell you, we're always, we always want additional participation. And so, these, the, I think everyone recognizes that housing is, you know, affordable housing, homelessness are growing issues. And, and there have, we don't end up in contentious discussions about this. It's more of, we wish we could support more programs, more projects. And so, you know, that's, I think, the only maybe addition that I would add is that the COC helps guide, but ultimately, the decision in, in what programs for services that, that we, we develop or that we, we fund lies with, with me and, and keeping that community contact and trying to address concerns when they come up. You know, of course, as with any social service program, the need far outweighs the available resources. But we try and, we try and stretch the funding as best that we can. Um, but we try and, we try and stretch the funding as best that we can to address specific concerns, um, that come up within the community.
Appreciate that. Um, I guess where I'm going with this is, um, we have a lot of disparate programs, um, trying to tackle this. We as a city are trying to tackle this in a dozen different ways. Some of the, some of our funded directly through the city. Some of them are in partnership with the county or regional authorities. Um, this is one of those twenty-one sixty-three, um, according to RCWs, is one that we could choose to manage ourselves in the city of Pasco. And what I'm trying to figure out is how do these things all fit together? Because I have a very poor picture right now of how all these things fit together. It seems strange, in this case, for example, um, for the city to be ceding our control to the county, Franklin County, who then contracts with Benton County to, to implement something that can only be spent, if I understood you correctly, in Franklin County. Um, well, we have other programs that are, that are local within city or within Franklin County or other, or one, other ones that are regional. And I'm, I'm very confused about our disparate approach to how we're taking, we, we're, we're tackling this as a region. Um, and so I, I'm, I'm, I'm struggling at understanding how twenty-one sixty-three specifically, I get that twenty-one, tw- the twenty-sixty, frankly, it's a, it's a, it's a county's control. We, we, we can provide advice to them, but they, they ultimately have that authority. So I'm not, I don't, I don't wanna dwell on that portion. But I'm trying to understand, how does tw- how does this twenty-one sixty-three program fit within our overall bigger efforts as a region and, and specifically within the city of Pasco to where we're going?
Yeah, and what I can tell you is that, um, all of our housing programs, uh, we, we have to report on, um, including our local funding, um, to the Department of Commerce. And it affects other programs, funding that we get specifically for Franklin County, um, in, in, um, in our consolidated homeless grant, in, in some of these, and we have a, we actually have a service, a community development block grant, a service grant, um, that, uh, we contract with CAC to provide, um, um, outreach and housing services in the non-entitlement areas of the county. And so it's, it's, um, it's, it, it's all part of, and, and they have, um, you know, they, they base future awards off of, off of varying formulas that include past spending, um, making sure that, that, um, you know, you're, you know, how, what the funding is being addressed for. And so I, I understand, stand, you know, where you're coming from. I think one thing that you may not be aware of with regard to my office, I used to be, uh, we used to be a, a bi-county office. Um, and so it was a Benton and Franklin County office. Um, and so I, I reported to three commissioners on, in Benton County and three commissioners in Franklin County. And, and they all had equal say. And so they wouldn't always agree on, on things. Um, and so, um, the, the decision, uh, was to, um, to separate that, uh, create one lead agency and, and, um, and then have a contractor, and we have a memorandum of agreement between the two counties to provide the same services in both counties. Um, the, the, the one thing that I could say that there is a benefit to my office operating this program is, is, is in large part because of the reporting requirements. And so it's, I have to do this for all of my programs, so it's, excuse me, it's not a heavy lift to enter data into, and we, the, uh, the system that we use is the Homeless Management Information System. You may hear it referred to as HMIS. And so every dollar that we spend in the program, we account for in HMIS. And then, um, you know, commerce, we have, uh, year-end reports that we have to, we have to identify, you know, how many people were served, um, you know, what dollars were spent on rapid rehousing versus eviction prevention utilities. Um, and so there, there, it, it, that's something that we do for every program. And so I think, and I know this question came up when, um, when I was, when we were looking at bifurcating the, the, the county offices. And Commerce's response was that they, they want, they prefer to develop partnerships, particularly regional per- partnerships, because the funding goes further. You can do more with, when you, when you, when you partner with cities and counties, um, as opposed to each one doing their own thing, because then you have, you know, you have to pay staff to do it. You have to do all these other things. Um, and, and so it's, um, the, the, the push, at least from commerce, to, to, um, regionalize areas. The West Side is maybe a little bit different because of the population base. Um, but that's, uh, that was the push when I was talking about, when I, I had conversations with them about, uh, when we were, uh, when the bi-county office was, was, um, breaking into, into, uh, a separate, separate entity. It was, it was focused on what, well, how, how we want, we wanna get the most bang for our buck, and how do we go about doing that? And I don't even know if I answered your question. I, I hope I did. I, I sometimes I feel like I start rambling and.
Yeah, no, it's a burden of knowledge, right? You know a lot about this. And so it's, um, easy to get trapped in those, in, in the details of it. Um, I guess my question to, to staff would be, um, I know we're in the process of a housing action plan, where we're trying to understand, um, housing affordability in a variety of standpoints. And, um, uh, maybe Director White, I'm not sure if you're the right one to direct this to, um, including homelessness and including other forms of, of low, of, you know, low-income housing and, et cetera. And I'm just trying to get, I don't have a picture of how this works, and I'm struggling with this for our mental health services and other services that, that are being provided on a regional level. And so what I'm trying to guess, I'm trying to understand is how does this fit within that? And what other, how, how do we, how do we make the most of this, um, in terms of trying to solve what, what issues we have going on in Pasco? Um, maybe you can tell me a timeline or, um, um, give me, help me with a roadmap?
Can I speak a little bit? So probably I can probably answer. I was listening to what you're saying, and you're trying to come up with what is the best thing for Pasco, the city of Pasco? I grew up in Pasco. I've been here for sixty-three years. And in the time I, when we were brought, we were, I was mental health. But not only that, I was interested in, in the homelessness. So I became a part of what you call the Housing Alliance in Seattle area. And I also became a legislative lead where you're voting for things to make our community better. One of the things that I believe that we've done, and no other county in the state of Washington has done this, is that we've made the cities be able to apply for certain monies that we do because we're together. But not only that, because we became a part of the community in the West Side, and they became to know us. So they gave us funding. And so when you're talking about the city of Pasco, I don't see it that way. I see it as the tri-cities. I see that we have to do it as a community because the homeless come over from Pasco to Kennewick, to Richland and everywhere. Richland thinks that there's no homelessness over there. That's not true. It's everywhere. And so one of the things that no other county has developed, Kyle developed a mental health program, which it helps subsidize the housing. With the mentally ill, they probably make eight hundred, seven hundred and something. We subsidize their housing so they can manage. So when the Pasco police, I think Angela, with some of the meetings that we had, we'd say, hey, this person continues to be homeless and loses housing. We went out there, we got him housed, and we continued to serve him, which he was only making something. And our programs have worked. And I have people that have only left my program because they've passed away with COVID or something medical. But as a community, we brought more to Pasco, like even the buying boards, which is the Tri-City Hispanic Chamber. We wanted to develop. I wanted to develop it. We wanted to bring money in it. We supplied it with, what was it? How much, what was it? One point five million?
Two, one point two.
So we have been working towards it. So if you wanna make a decision, I believe the reason we've done such a good job is because we have mental health background, because we know how to do assessment. We know how to work with Congress. We know how to work with the Housing Alliance. We know up what needs to come to our community. The problem that I have right now is the fact that everybody wants their own pot. And we have to come together as a whole unit for the population, not for one city. And I had a young lady call me, and she says, I've been trying to get into Haven, and I keep on getting pushed around. How do I get there? So I told her she can work with me. I will, she has to fill out application for a person. I go, but you can also help me with the pit count. If people really wanna get involved, help with the pit count. We wake up at five in the morning, go out there and try to see all the homeless people, but we haven't only stopped there. We just don't do it one day. Kyle developed an outreach team where there was KPD, some of our staff. Every Thursday, we go out to all the communities and try to find homeless people. So we developed things that have worked. I went to Commerce and said, I need money for my mental health. We're running out of money. They said, well, you can't come up here and ask for money. I didn't know that you couldn't do that. So I said, well, what do I do? And he goes, you're gonna have to apply for grants. So, and that was in two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen. I talked to him, and it was Jeff Spring, and they, when did they do the, um, SEBRA program? They brought a mental health program that was a pilot around two years ago. I think they started in Spokane. They brought it. Now we have a SEBRA program also besides our mental health. And now they're trying to open up another subsidy housing that it be, it would be like for somebody who's disabled assisting those. So we're above most counties. And most counties go, how do you guys get the money? Well, one of the things that we've been able to do with being the tri-cities is that we work for one place that is coordinated entry, and then we have HMIS. And so we can kinda switch our roles, that the roles aren't just singled out. But to me, it takes all of us to end homelessness and all of us to develop things. And yeah, you could say, could it go here? Could it go there? But what we've brought to this community, it's incredible, because we have brought programs no other county has. And you can contact counties and ask them, do they have a disabled housing program subsidy? No. When the governor was here, Inslee, I said, I need mentorship. I need people's places to build it so we can have the homeless live appropriately. And the homeless, not everybody is just from not having a job or not growing up with all the essential needs they need. It's people that in aneurysm, they become unable to work. They don't have family support. And they're the lady that might be on the corner. So we really go out of bounds for trying to bring everything. And so I'm, all my family's in Pasco. I live in Richland, oh guys, sorry. But I, this is my community. So that's all I was gonna say. And I really believe in our programs. And we have insight most people don't. And the thing about it is that we have a mission. That's a good mission, and it's nice. But it also doesn't provide low-barrier shelter. And so when people say, oh, what can we do? Get on our COC, become one of a part of our community. Let's work together. And I'm always saying that. People go, well, you get upset, or and I, or you're passionate. Oh, yeah, I am passionate. So I'll leave. You're probably just gonna say, Gloria, you shouldn't have said much. So thank you, guys. Just for listening.
Thank you. Uh, Director White, can you, or, um, Ms. Lincoln, can you speak to the, uh?
Sorry, I grabbed it. Uh, yeah, thank you, uh, council. Um, that's not an item that would be included in the housing action plan, um, though it is something that is certainly something that we, as a staff, are interested in diving into further and trying to work with council to come up with some solutions. Perhaps the retreat would be a, a, a good spot to give staff a little more direction on, on areas that you'd like us to focus on or partner with others. Um, I think the, the group that came last week, that, uh, Matt and, uh, Chief Gear would be another appropriate area to find out more about what, how they're focusing on houselessness and homelessness and, uh, see if that's, that's an area that can be expanded upon too. I, I agree that it's a, it's a regional, um, topic, but I don't think it's something that staff are, um, diving too far into just yet.
So let me translate that from my brain. Um, did I hear you correctly to say that our housing action plan does not tack, tackle homelessness? Or, um?
No, the action plan doesn't. It's, um, it's geared towards affordable housing and housing opportunities, but it does not tackle homelessness.
I appreciate that. Because really what I'm looking for is I just don't understand the picture. Um, it's a problem I have with our mental health services in the region, um, and it's a problem I have with our, our, our homeless services as well. Um, and that's not a, your problem. That's not necessarily your problem, um, though you're, you're obviously a piece of the, of the puzzle. Um, I'm, I, I would, I would, that's something I would very much like to understand. Um, if you have any materials that helps tell that story or has that picture, I'd appreciate if you could send it over my direction.
I will.
Through staff work, I'm, it's pretty easy to find.
Sure.
Thank you.
Councilmember Milne and then Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I think, uh, was it Gloria? So, okay, I know she touched on it a little bit as far as on the homelessness counts. And you said you guys do them every week? Is that all through the year or just certain times or? No, the, the pit count is, is one day out of the year. Um, and it, it happens to be the end of January, and it's, it's this Thursday. And, and that day isn't, isn't determined by, by my office or it's determined by the Department of Commerce. And so the, the count will take place statewide. Um, and, and we go out in, with the assistance of a great group of volunteers, uh, go out and, and go to libraries, go to bus stations, parks, any place that we might be able to find someone that is homeless. And, um, we request that they fill out a survey. Uh, of course, they don't have to, but whether they fill out a survey or not, we provide them with a backpack that has, um, essential needs, socks, uh, hats, gloves, um, those kinds of things. And we do have some sleeping bags that we hand out also. So they, they get one of those, whether they participate in the survey or not.
And it's the whole nation of, uh, HUD does this. They can get a snapshot of what the federal government has to do, what they have to do to bring in, to improve and end homelessness. So what we do, what you're talking about, is the outreach that you started up with, uh, Nidya.
Yeah, and so we have a, uh, be, simply because it was becoming, um, more difficult to get out into the community myself. The outreach quite frankly, prior to, uh, COVID was Gloria and myself. When, when we found out that there was somebody in the community that was homeless, um, we would jump in the car and go out and see if we could help with them. Um, that need has been increasing. Um, and I think COVID, quite frankly, magnified that and the, the, our one percent or less than one percent vacancy rate um, for rental units is, has, uh, created issues. Uh, and so, uh, as, as a response to that, um, I, I developed a, a outreach coordinator position. Uh, and so the person that we put in that position is bilingual. Uh, and, um, if law enforcement, code enforcement, city official, someone in the community, anybody, anybody experiences somebody that is, um, homeless, uh, they can, they can reach out to that person and, uh, reach out to Nidya in my office and, and, uh, unless she's dealing with someone else that's homeless, the expectation is that she, she, she doc- drops what she's doing and goes out and, and meets with that person. Now, that being said, um, like I'd said earlier, the, the, the need far outweighs the available resources. So we aren't always going to be able to place somebody. We do end up in situations where we have people that, uh, we have, that are homeless, that we have placed in units, and they've damaged them. And so we end up having to pay for that. Um, and, and so, you know, we certainly wanna be flexible, but we can't keep paying for property damage because, um, someone isn't, isn't behaving the way that we want them to in the unit. So we take some of that into consideration also, um.
Okay. I was just curious, 'cause I know like, January twenty-sixth seems like the wrong month to me to be go out counting people. I mean, that's the coldest, so people might be hibernating somewhere where you just don't see them. Versus like in the summer where you actually see quite a lot of people.
No, I, I agree one hundred percent. And it's, it's interesting, two out of the last three years that we've done this, uh, done this. The day that it snowed. And last year's was prolonged because we had another out, another outbreak. And so, uh, the point in time count got pushed back into February. And it's, it's like, it never fails. We get dumped on snow the night before. And, and you know, and again, people are resourceful, and they're not gonna be laying in a park in the snow all the time. And, and so it's, it's, I agree with you. It's, it's kinda funny. It would make more sense in June. You know, if we go out and count in June, I think what we'd have a better idea of people that would be, you know, sleeping in parks or, or off a trail or something like that. But we don't, we don't have a say in the day that it's.
I think that John Trumble, is that his last name? He came up with me from Kennewick. And we were in Pasco, and we were going to different sections because we know where people hang out. So I'm trying to show him and have a good picture. It's a lot more of homeless people. But not only that, the fact that we don't have a low-barrier shelter also. But also to see how can we make this all work. And because he goes, well, it can't just be all the cities that they just pay. I go, no, there should be a mentorship. I go, we can work together, but it has to be all of us together, working to try to help each other out and put into programs. But that count is just a snapshot. And he didn't think we'd find people, and they were under their sleeping bags with carts, and it was snowing. And he would say, do you mind if I take a picture? So he took pictures, but I get to, you get to know the homeless people, just like the officers know who's homeless and who's here and there. But we need to find a way to end it. And so I'm passionate about that.
Well, I appreciate the presentation. I know in the past, and I'm just saying what you hear on council is that, I've heard that other cities take homeless and bring them across the river to Pasco so that their numbers look better. Whether it's true or not, obviously, I think you guys would know the answer. Have you ever seen that?
But you know what, I've had, now, I had, okay, I won't say because he gets upset with me. But I had people say that our area isn't really good at making sure. But I have other cities from Walla Walla, from Spokane, from different areas come here and say, you're better, you guys are better with the homeless than other places. So, they can come from different places, it doesn't matter for us, but we cannot, certain programs are the ninety days.
So, I think, I think the short answer is, that's not really been my experience, that, that people are dropping them off in Pasco. I think one, one thing to point out maybe with our local dollar programs, so the 2163 programs, is that we require that a person be a resident of the county, that they receive the services for ninety days. So, someone can't come from Walla Walla County and just show up and say, I'm a Franklin County resident, I need these services. They have to live, lived in the county for ninety days. And we verify that by, you know, most, most of these people receive some form of disability. And where is their disability check originated from? You know, there are some of those checks and balances to make sure that, we want to make sure that Franklin County's funding goes to Franklin County residents, Benton County's funding goes to Benton County residents. And in the event, you know, homeless people will be homeless one day in Pasco, homeless one day in Richland, then in Kennewick. It, it, they bounce around. And so, in, in the event that we were in a situation where they, maybe it's, we know that they've spent multiple days in, in the different cities, we take their last known permanent address and, and apply that.
Okay, what I was referring to is I've just heard, again, you hear a lot of different stuff, but I've heard that certain cities will take people, say, oh, stay in Pasco for two days until our count's done and then you could come back. But that way, so that, that their numbers are that they're decreasing, you know, homelessness in their town and that the other towns are not.
Because we, we kind of have, even though my, people might do that, we have, we have so much paperwork and so much history of a lot of our homeless people that you see out in the community. The new ones, it might be a new one, but either way, we don't, we don't see that. In fact, I think that I, the most I see more is in the Kennewick area. Then, and Pasco will have more areas like around the Mission when they are coming out. But the Mission would not do the pit count last year with me. So, they said the people didn't want to do the survey. So, we can't make them, that's a private facility. So, all we can do is work with the facilities. But like the shelters and other places that do put the people into HMIS, those are counted. But during COVID, we had funding from ESG. So, we were trying to get all the homeless off the streets and we have the ability to put them in hotels. But then the hotels started shutting down like days in. But then some of the cities, even Kennewick, said one of their meetings, oh, we have this good amount of money in the hotel business. I'm thinking, yeah, we were taking those keys. But there, we know it's kind of, we know where people, they come and go and they move from place to place. But I've never heard that just for the count.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I appreciate it. Again, on Council, you're gonna hear a ton of stuff.
Sure.
I do appreciate your good answer on that, thank you.
You bet.
Sir Brown, you want to keep it brief?
Okay, real brief, it's a lot. So, this is what I call data download. So, we've downloaded with all this information. So, one of my questions is gonna be, do you all work with your 2163 program with an agency here as a CAC? Do you all help support them in any kind of way? Funding, extended programs, where they may assist with rental assistance for four months? It's like a graduate program from where I understand it. So, if they're not able to sustain themselves out of that four-month period that they've received lateral help, then does this program come in and assist and support CAC?
We, we do contract some of the 2163 funding to CAC. We do for both Benton and Franklin Counties. We operate as part of, well, I'll try and be brief, I know we've been up here probably longer than we have. So, we op, we operate coordinated entry. And so, that's a single point of contact for someone experiencing homelessness. They come into our office and then we typically will refer them out to, to, to programs or help them internally, just depending on where there is availability. And so, I, I don't, I don't, to say that, that the funding that we provide them adds on extra months to a program that they're already providing a graduated subsidy, I don't believe that's the case. It's another funding source for them to be able to assist people with, you know, and again, I'm not sure what's, what their funding source is for. Each, each funding source has, there are strings that are attached to it and there are, are, um, reporting requirements. The local dollar funding tends to be more flexible. And so, it's, it's, you know, when you get money from the state, they tell you how to spend it. And you either spend it that way or you don't get the money. And so, I think I would venture a guess, unless, I don't know, I'd have to know more specifics about what the, what the program is, but we do provide funding to, to CAC.
Okay, that's satisfactory, just for the sake of time, I'm gonna kind of rush through this. Is it like five seconds though?
Okay, five seconds. I just want to tell you that we do put the help of families out if they ran out of a certain funding from CAC. But a lot of times, our funding is extent, it's spent already because I have like continuously housed the Franklin County clientele for years. So, we can't just put somebody in the disabled housing because we have a certain, he makes me have a certain amount of money that I can spend in each program.
Okay, so, I'll just end with this. So, I'm understanding when Councilmember Craig Maloney was speaking about, I use the word jurisdictions, cities, regions, counties. There is city accountability, I believe. Because we owe that to our constituents, to be accountable. And we should be good stewards of all business of the city. So, there is a slight separation, but then I do believe in joining forces to attack what's prevalent. I mean, we know that. But again, there is city accountability. There's accountability for us as council members to speak on behalf of each district and the city. So, I believe there is city accountability. The whole one-pot issue, I'm good with that. We obviously need to sit and get at a round table. All cities need to discuss this. You know, we can definitely consider that. And I'll, I'll just close with this, we can consider that, but this is a lot to download. And I'm very mindful of how passionate I am about this city, like you are about this program. So, the accountability and the obligations that we have to be good stewards of all business of the city, it is at hand. And we have to be mindful of that. So, I think we need to back up a little bit and kind of talk about this and break it down in each scenario. And then I think this is something that we all are concerned about. But this is a lot to capsize and then move dollars around as such. All cities need to be accountable, responsible and proactive. So, it is a city-county effort, but together, we can make it happen. So, I, I hear the message. We, we, I think, just for me, as Councilmember Brown, we gotta slide on and take a deep breath. This is, this is going way too fast for me to make any kind of calls on. We need more information, as you see, it's in pieces of information. We need to just, we can do this, we could do it together. And we could be successful with your passion. But it needs to be transparent, it needs to be clear, it needs to be on point with these numbers. And I don't have them tonight, but they're here. So, let's keep working at it. I, I think, I think that's only fair.
And last thing I can just say is, I hope everybody can join our COC meetings that are held quarterly because you're stakeholders and you are accountable for your cities. So, thank you very much.
Councilwoman Roach or Councilmember Serrano, any additional comments or questions?
Nothing here.
Mayor, this is Councilwoman Roach. I just wanted to say, uh, thank you to Kyle Sullivan. And I didn't catch the other presenter's name, is it Gloria?
It's Gloria Caldwell, yes.
Gloria, yeah, I feel like I have learned so much from this presentation and commend you for the work that you're doing. And I understand it's a really big topic and very difficult to, to just tackle all the different housing issues, whether it's homelessness or affordable housing and everything that goes with it. I have one question for you. I was recently, my kids are in the Pasco School District and the school district just recently reached out to parents in the district about fostering teenage adolescent refugees who have come unaccompanied by a parent or an adult. And so, I was wondering if the funds that are available would be applicable to adolescents as well in that situation?
Uh, you know, the, the short answer is, is that it certainly wouldn't exclude them. I think when you start talking about a rental subsidy, though, you're, you're not, we're not able to, uh, most adolescents aren't able to, to rent, to rent a unit. And so, I think the household that they, uh, that they recited in, if they met income eligibility, would be eligible. But, uh, you know, that would, again, that wouldn't necessarily be a result of, of the, the youth's status. We don't have a program for under the age of eighteen at this time. You know, the, the, yeah, we just, it's, uh, there are too many barriers with regard to acquiring housing.
Okay.
I don't know if that answered your question? I, I hope it did.
Yes, it, it does. And that is the situation in terms that they're providing funding for, um, either not providing funding in terms of the rental subsidy, but I think as foster care parents. The, I guess to add to the conversation that I've heard, Councilmember or Mayor Protem Maloney, I, I feel like it, I hear your concern about wanting to understand, like, it seems like a puzzle. And what piece of the puzzle is this solving or, or how many pieces does it put together? And I'm very much interested in the same thing. But I also don't want to impede the, the work, the funding that is being done and, and especially if it does have positive impact to our community and, and gets people into housing. Especially because I, I do see that, you know, people who are in these struggling sorts of situations, they, housing can be very transient and so, they could be in Pasco one day and then next week they could be in a hotel in Kennewick and then a hotel in Richland. And so, I think we, in some cases, especially in this one, uh, thinking about it regionally, really resonates with me as Gloria said. So, just want to say thank you again for the presentation, I definitely learned a lot. And that's all for me.
Thank you. Thank you again for the presentation, there's definitely an ongoing conversation on this subject and we'll bring it back.
Sounds good, thanks for having me.
All right, thank you. So, we'll go on to our next item. I'd be Pasco School District Capital Facility Plan Update and Impact Fee Report, Director White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. And, and this issue involves another interlocal agreement, uh, this time with the Pasco School District and the city of Pasco. The interlocal agreement calls for Council's consideration every two years of the capital improvement program for the district. The capital improvement plan identifies new facilities that are associated with enrollment growth within the Pasco School District. And eventually, as appropriate, it's incorporated into the city's comprehensive land use plan. A part of the capital program assesses the calculation of school impact fees. And there's a very complicated formula associated with that. And if you've seen the capital plan, it's near the end. But the, uh, school impact fee itself for the district was adopted by Pasco City Council in 2012. It established per-unit fees for single-family and multifamily. Those have not changed since 2012. But you can see from examining the capital plan that the needs have also increased. So, tonight, a presentation on the district's capital plan will be at least initiated by Sarah Thornton from the Pasco School District. And I think she'll have some, some help with some other experts in the field.
Good evening, Council. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present this evening on Pasco School District's 2022 Capital Facilities Plan. And I appreciate the introduction from Mr. White to give you a, a bit of background. If I could take just a moment and briefly introduce my Pasco School District colleagues who are here with me this evening. Superintendent Michelle Whitney is here, as well as Assistant Superintendent of Operations and Supports, Raul Satal. Mr. John Weatherby is here as well, he's Manager of Capital Projects. And Executive Director of Support Services, Jay Simon is here this evening, as well as Facilities Manager, Eli Garza. So, we appreciate their support. We're all here this evening to answer any questions you may have or provide any additional information. But the bulk of the presentation, as Mr. White alluded to, will be from Denise Stifarm, who is an attorney with Pacifica Law Group and has been advising Pasco schools on our SEPA mitigation efforts, growth management efforts and the capital facilities plan for a number of years now. The, the capital facilities plan and the deep partnership with the city of Pasco around the impact fee process is, is, has, was really quite extensive dating back to 2011 and 2012. That, that deep partnership has continued and for the district, we are really quite grateful for that because the receipt of the impact fees, as well as the city's partnership around collection of SEPA mitigation fees from county development, has really been crucial to us in the school district to continue to have the ability to manage the impacts of growing enrollment that occurs in between bond elections and has, over the period of time and before we had the, the impact fees in place, has really been trying as far as being able to provide a good quality experience to students and provide adequate facilities for them. So, we are on pursuant to the city's ordinance, a two-year cycle, to update and present to you for future approval, our capital facilities plan. And so, that's what we're going to do this evening. We were a little bit ahead of the curve in 2019 and then fell behind that a little bit when we took a brief pause for COVID. So, this year's presentation actually puts us back on, on our two-year cycle. So, with that, I will turn it over to Denise to do the heavy lifting. But again, we're here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Sarah. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Happy to be here again, again, it's Denise Stifarm with Pacifica Law Group. What I'd like to do is just follow up on Mr. White and Sarah's comments about the capital facilities plan and then go a little bit deeper in terms of what the district looked at in terms of capacity and planning for the future. Then I will touch on those school impact fees and give a little bit of background on the formula and how we got to the calculated fees, but also just reiterating that the actual level of the fee as proposed stays the same as it has since 2012. And then we'll talk a little bit about the SEPA mitigation process. So, as Mr. White indicated, the capital facilities plan is adopted by reference or presented to be adopted by reference as a part of the city's comprehensive plan. And when we prepare the capital facilities plan, we focus on what's required by the city's ordinance and what is required by the Growth Management Act with regard to capital facilities. So, it's looking at the district's locally adopted service standard, using that to determine in each school building what is available for regular classroom use, comparing that capacity with the district's current enrollment and its projected enrollment over a six-year planning period. And then looking at where there are capacity needs related to growth and how the district plans to meet those needs. And all of that forms the basis for a school impact fee. And districts are not always eligible for a school impact fee. They first need to show that they're actually going to be growing, that they have a growth-related need and that they have a plan to address that need. So, those are some fundamental requirements that the capital facilities plan is designed to document. You'll hear me referring to the 2022 Capital Facilities Plan. The district adopted it in November of 2022. But it does use a planning period, a horizon that goes through the 2028 school year. So, the district's enrollment has, as many of you are aware, been quickly growing over the years, about 2,000 students since 2012, about 400 students per year approximately. That slowed down a bit with COVID. There was a, a plateau of soaring. That slowed down a bit with COVID. Um, there was a, a plateau of sorts that occurred, but the enrollment now has started to bounce back, um, and the district expects that to continue over the six-year planning period. Um, growth is projected to be at about twelve hundred students through twenty twenty-eight. That will occur at all three grade levels. Um, and so when we look at the capital facilities plan data, you'll see that there has been the recent and ongoing growth, and then the projected growth going forward. All of that, the district has used in the course of updating their plans in the last several years to really think about and plan for capacity, and knowing that when we were back in twenty seventeen, there was a capacity need at all three grade levels. And so at that time, of course, the district had the twenty seventeen bond. That project included two new elementary schools, Three Rivers and Columbia River. It included capacity improvements at the middle school level as well as modernization. So there's the new Ray Reynolds Middle School and the Stevens Middle School expansion with capacity. It also provided for portables, which are interim capacity solutions while we're waiting for the permanent space to occur. And then, of course, there was land acquisition and some land, uh, transportation and maintenance improvements. The key is that in that twenty seventeen bond, the district was able to plan for and address the elementary and the middle school capacity needs. And while those projects are now completed or close to completion, the elementary projects remain with available capacity to serve growth. And so that's an important element because in the impact fee formula, there is a component for elementary capacity, and that is because new development coming into the district has been front-funded with a seat for the students that are expected to be generated from that new development. What the capital facilities plan continues to show at this point is that there is still growth, but that there is a, um, we saw it in twenty seventeen, and it is still there now, and it is even larger, that there is a need for capacity at the high school level. And so as a part of their current planning, the district has a bond proposal for February fourteen, twenty twenty-three, and that includes a focus on the high school capacity needs. It includes a third comprehensive high school, a small innovative high school, and then there will be a CTE modernization that actually includes about seventy-five new seats. So there's a variety of solutions for high school capacity, um, that will serve not only the existing need at the high school level, but it will also provide capacity for new growth, new residential development that will be occurring over the six-year planning period. Of course, there's also components for athletic fields at Pasco High School, and then land acquisition, planning for the future for growth as it continues to occur. So, again, thinking about growth-related capacity needs, what we know in the capital facilities plan and the enrollment projections is that there is growth occurring at all three grade levels. The twenty seventeen bond helped to address elementary and middle school growth. It provided continuing capacity for elementary level, and now the twenty twenty-three planning is for that high school level growth. So, uh, Mr. White alluded to the complicated formula for school impact fees. So I'm gonna try to break that down and make it, um, put it into some bite-sized pieces. But I first wanna touch on just what impact fees are, what the limitations are, and how they're used. Um, impact fees are a tool developed under the Growth Management Act to provide a mechanism for growth to pay a portion, but not all, of the costs of the capacity needed to serve the new growth. Um, the intent behind that is to allow some portion of the cost to be shifted away from the existing community and, uh, filtered to new development. Importantly, though, by law, impact fees cannot be the sole source of funding new capacity related to growth. There must be other funds. Um, typically, that comes in the form of local funds, and that typically comes in the form of a bond or a capital levy for schools. Um, the district also is eligible, and, um, most districts at, are at some level to receive state school construction assistance program funds. So that's another funding source. There may be federal funds in some school districts as well. Um, but it is important to, to underscore that impact fees cannot be the sole source. They also must be expended within ten years of receipt on a capacity-related improvement that is identified in an adopted capital facilities plan. So there is a strict tie to that identified capacity need related to growth, and there is a timeline for those expenditures. They also need to be, um, eh, to be, uh, calculated in a way that is reasonably related to the proportionate impact of the new development. And I say, and I underscored "the" because it has to be tied to the actual home that is being constructed in some way that is reasonable and reflects a proportionate share. And that's where we get into that impact fee formula. State law provides us with some broad parameters, um, in terms of reasonable relationship, a proportionate share, and that other sources of funds be accounted for and credited against the unfunded need. Where the formula has been developed over the years has been with, um, jurisdictions who initially adopted school impact fee ordinances, developed with stakeholders present at the table to really ensure that it was a defensible, sound formula that was acceptable, not only to the jurisdictions and the school districts, but also to the development community. And that formula is what you have adopted as a part of your code, and it's also adopted within the capital facilities plan. So, it, it, it does look very complicated, but I, I try to break it down to just some, some small pieces to do a high-level summary. What the district does in determining, uh, what to input into that formula is it identifies those growth-related capacity projects that are in their capital facilities plan. So you heard me talk about the growth at all three grade levels, the fact that the district in twenty seventeen was able to plan for middle school and elementary and address those through the bond projects. They have continuing needs at the elementary, and they front-funded with the voters, um, the voters front-funded those elementary capacity projects. And then they have those high school capacity needs, and they're planning for those capacity projects as a part of this plan. So, using the elementary and high school project costs, we get to a cost per student seat. But we're not done then, because we need to tie that directly to the impacts of the new development. And so what we use is called a student generation rate, and this is based upon real data. And it looks back at the most recent period of development within the school district to determine, on average, how many students are, are residing in new single-family homes and in new multifamily units. So it's a one-to-one match of building permit with student address, broken down by elementary, middle, and high school levels. We apply that to the cost per student seat at both the elementary and the high school level for purposes of this plan to get to the impact of the new development. At that point, then, by law, we're required to credit any other funds that the district will have towards that same improvement. So we apply a credit for the expected state funds, and then we apply a credit for the expected taxes, property taxes, that a new homeowner will pay towards the improvement. So what they're going to be paying towards the, towards the bond that will fund those projects. And that's important because we don't want someone to pay twice for the same improvement. So after those credits are applied, you get to the final unfunded fee. And at that point, in the city ordinance is a requirement that you discount that by twenty-five percent. So that comes off of the top lot right away. And then after that, this, the district's Board of Directors has, over the years, and this started in twenty twelve, with the conversations with the city, applied a discretionary discount to keep the, the impact fee at the level where it has traditionally been in this community. And so, this is, these are the numbers. Um, I tried to explain them, um, in a narrative, but this is what the formula looks like, and it's consistent with what is adopted in your code, but we have numbers filled in. And this is the proposed impact fee. And you will see that the, um, discounts there are, for single family, it's discounted at the end of the calculation by about fifty-two percent, multifamily by about seventy-seven percent. Now, the reason the multifamily discount is much higher is because in the Pasco School District right now, for whatever reason, the district is seeing more students residing in multifamily homes than in single-family homes. So they're just seeing more students. That's generating a higher number. When we apply the discounts, we get down to that, we, we get to a seventy-seven percent discount. So, that is the impact fee formula. And that is what is presented to you as a part of the twenty twenty-two capital facilities plan for purposes of your consideration. But one of the things that we wanted to touch on as a part of this presentation is SEPA mitigation fees and what the district does for purposes of school mitigation in Franklin County. And importantly, Franklin County, unlike the city, um, has not yet adopted a Growth Management Act-based school impact fee ordinance. So in jurisdictions where there is not such an ordinance, the school districts are left with the mechanism of trying to get school mitigation through the environmental review process. And so this is a comparison of essentially how that operates, the two different statutory authorities. But the important one is the applicability. In city of Pasco, with all impact fee ordinances, like all impact fee ordinances, all new residential developments are charged in impact fees. Typically collected at building permit issuance. Where there is a SEPA-based review, there are, by, by state law, what are called categorical exemptions. So certain projects are not subject to environmental review. They don't, they never get to a point where agencies are able to comment and ask for mitigation. And in Franklin County, this applies to any development project of, uh, less than twenty units. So it could be a plat that has fifteen units. It could be just one building permit. Those types of developments, um, the district just does not have a mechanism for requesting school mitigation. So that's the key difference there. The district has, uh, over the years, made a request to Franklin County to adopt a GMA-based school impact fee ordinance similar to what is adopted in the city of Pasco. The, uh, county has declined to date, but the district will continue to renew those efforts. Um, and will continue to, in the absence of that, seek school mitigation through the SEPA process. Um, prior to twenty seventeen, there was not a system in place for, for regular collection of the school mitigation fees. In twenty seventeen, the district took a lot of time and effort to really take a look to make sure that they had all of the safeguards in place to be able to get notice from, uh, Franklin County to make sure that was being tracked, to make sure that they were commenting on every project that was subject to SEPA review. In many cases, we file appeals, yeah, um, as a safeguard. We have always had those appeals negotiated as a dismissal while the developer signs a school mitigation agreement. That school mitigation agreement identifies a fee that is the same fee as is charged in the city of Pasco. It is based on the district's capital facilities plan, and that agreement is recorded on the title to the property and is legally enforceable through that mechanism. We've also had the benefit of the city as a backstop. Um, any project that needs to get water from the city is, um, reviewed by city staff to ensure that a school mitigation fee is collected as well. And then finally, in twenty nineteen, the Board of Directors articulated in a policy that was adopted in district policies, their desire and their intent that throughout all of their jurisdictions, school mitigation be sought in an equitable manner, that they, um, will use all legally available means in order to collect and seek from new residential development, school mitigation. And they also recognize the appreciation of the city of Pasco's GMA-based school impact fee ordinance as an ideal means for doing that. Um, and again, as, as previously referenced, the city, or excuse me, the school district will continue to seek from Franklin County adoption of a school impact fee ordinance, but in the absence of that, will continue to seek school mitigation through SEPA. So with that, a lot of information, and I know you all have questions, so happy to answer anything.
Thank you for your presentation. Um, any questions or comments, uh, Mayor Protem Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor Bravus, and thank you so much for the, uh, for the presentation. Um, I've sat through, I guess, one or two of these now. Um, and I know former, um, uh, Mayor Watkins had some strong concerns, especially about making sure that it was equitably, um, that, that the fees were also being, um, um, being collected from developments in the county. It sounds like that process has worked well. Um, recently, we, as a city, annexed m- most of what's left, I think, of the, uh, Pasco's School District boundaries. So I believe most of it should be, across my fingers, taken care of. But I, I direct this over to, um, to city staff. I, I would love to see an overlay of the two, um, maps of the school district boundaries, as well as our annexed areas and the county areas, um, so I can understand better exactly what, what's, what's still county, school district, as opposed to what's city, school district. So, I'd appreciate that. Um, it doesn't affect, uh, my position on this. Uh, what I heard was, it's unchanged. Where the, uh, school district is asking us to collect the same fees we've been collecting. Um, and, um, yeah, and I, 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 I continue to support that. Growth should pay for growth, and that's what this does. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from Councilwoman Roach or Councilmember, um, Serrano?
Yeah, this is Councilman Serrano. Um, Ms. Stifarm, I believe, was your name, and I apologize if there's a difference in how it's read. Um, I believe, I, I wanna say you used the word kinda backstop in talking about how the city kinda utilizes its water connection through the SEPA process to ensure developers are paying, uh, their fair share through this program. Can you let, do you have, off the top of your head, other jurisdictions that are using a similar process whereby they're fundamentally utilizing their access to A, B, or C, this, in this case, water rights, to ensure that fees are collected? Um, and it sounds like this may also be happening somewhat outside of our purview. Is that correct? Within the county where we may have access to water that's needed by these developers? Can you kind of explain that process, and, you know, whether there's an official agreement, or, uh, kinda quite frankly, the propriety of that?
I, I think I will defer to Mr. White on that question.
Well, uh, Councilman Serrano, since this actually started, actually, uh, it, it takes place in both the Riverview area that's unincorporated and the newly annexed areas. Uh, there is no, uh, guarantee that city water will be extended pending a development agreement. And development agreements for the extension of city water for, uh, subdivisions in the unincorporated area have always gone through the process that you just described. Uh, we've, uh, and not just for school impact fees either, but for city impact fees relating to transportation and parks. Um, and it, it happens regularly, maybe not so much in the past two years or so, but it happens, uh, it's happened quite a bit since, at least since I've been here, roughly ten, twelve years now. Um, I don't know if I can speak directly to a legal analysis that's addressed the propriety of these agreements.
Okay, if, if you can't, and, and I realize that would defer then to Mr. Ferguson. I'm not asking for an analysis now, but I, I think, you know, often we kind of sweep things under the radar saying, past practice, and this has been vetted, yet, uh, as Councilman Maloney indicated, I've sat through a handful of these, yet, we've never had that analysis presented. If we are utilizing city water, which, I mean, is in quasi-fundamental right this day and age, um, to ensure that we're getting mitigation fees, I, I'd like to know that that's legal and a viable process, uh, as we continue to do so. So, again, not something I'm asking for you to opine on now, especially if you don't have that analysis already completed. But, you know, if there's something you can dust off, or update, or if you have to start anew, I think at some point it'd be wise for us to at least check into that and confirm, uh, you know, the legality of utilizing that process. And especially in the unincorporated areas, uh, there may be And especially in the unincorporated areas, uh, there may be, you know, some jurisdictional questions there. So I'll, I'll leave that question there. The, the second question, Freeman Stifarm, was you indicated that, uh, um, you know, obviously the pandemic impacted enrollment, but, uh, the numbers are looking like pre-pandemic enrollments. Obviously, you know, just as an anecdotal aside, I've talked to a handful of people who are disenrolling children, uh, do you have that data? And can you share that with us? If not, can I get that to us at some point? To confirm that those enrollment, again, that anecdotal data that I'm hearing is nothing more than that?
Uh, yeah, we can certainly get enrollment data from the previous history to, to demonstrate how it looked two thousand and eighteen through what is fall two thousand and twenty-two, and, and where you will see the dip for the pandemic, and then you'll see the, the rise back up, but we'll make sure that that does come through, um, from the district for you. And I, I want to touch really quickly, if I may, on just the, the water issue. Just to be clear, the process that the district goes through is independent of city water. The district is actually commenting as the school district on the school needs. It is filing with the county their request, filing the appeal through the county's process, and then negotiating a mitigation agreement with the developer, completely independent of any city action. I think, um, the, the tie to the city in this, quite honestly, does not occur with every development because not all of them are in city water service areas. But the tie is that when the city, through their, doing their own independent review, there is a look to see as we issues, and I'm speaking, not knowing how they're doing it on their side, but imagining just based upon how the process, as I understand it works, they're doing a check to see, um, as they issue a water certificate, has the impact fee that is separately been agreed to, been paid.
I, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Thank you again for the presentation. Uh, this is definitely an ongoing, uh, conversation. Uh, any questions to any of the other individuals that are here from the school? Hearing none, we'll move forward. Um, and with that, we will take a five-minute break, and after that, we will be in executive session for fifteen minutes. The city will now meet in executive session to discuss, um, uh, to discuss, um, with legal counsel about current or potential litigation per RCW four thousand and two point three zero point one one zero L I. Thank you.
And we are officially back in session. My button. With that, we will go on to item C on the agenda, review proposed process water reuse facility wastewater treatment agreement with Burnham SEV Pasco LLC. And for the first time, we will have Director Worley at the podium.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Surprised to see me up here doing work. Tonight, we wanted to share with you information related to the phase three of the process water reuse facility and the proposed draft, final draft of the wastewater treatment agreement with Burnham SEV Pasco LLC. What I'd like to do first, what I'd like to do first is give you a quick project review on where we're at. I've given a lot of information over the last year and a half, two years or so. So I want to kind of bring you up to speed on where we're at right now. And then we'll go over a little bit of a review of the agreement itself and answer any questions and then have discussion. And then we'll talk about the next steps following from this point forward, the options that are available. And just so you're aware, that picture you see on the screen is actually the RAB systems for the nitrogen removal in the greenhouses. So anyway, pretty cool. All right, so as you recall, the whole pre-treatment project is made up of four separate phases. Phase one right now is under construction. Council remembers awarding that project. It's the potable water and electrical upgrades. Phase two is the winter storage ponds, and that is 60% design. There is still a lot of work going on related to the dam safety office at ecology and trying to balance the site, figure out where the extra dirt is going, trying to make it as inexpensive as we possibly can. Phase three is the agreement we're going to be talking about tonight. And that has to do with the low rate anaerobic digester, the renewable natural gas, and the nitrogen removal system. And then there is a final phase four, which is an upgrade to the piping systems that are out in the farm fields, getting water from the reuse facility out to each of the pivots. The systems we have out there are older. They've been repaired several times. And now we're going to have more water go out to them, and we're going to extend them to other circles. So we need to look at the capacity of those to last for the next many years. This is a map showing those projects. As you can see on the bottom here, this is the phase one project, which is the water and the electric. This up here is the phase two project. This is the phase three project. And of course, phase four is out in the fields, getting water out to the field. So just, it's kind of one of the first times we've seen all four phases on a single map. So I thought that would be interesting for you to see. So the highlights of where we're at right now is that the engineering report and facility plan has been prepared and reviewed by ecology. We've received comments from ecology, and we are working with them right now on responses to those and trying to finalize and get approval for the facility plan. No construction work can go on out there until the facility plan has been approved, and then the construction drawings for the improvements have been also reviewed and approved by ecology. The project team is also working very hard on trying to reduce the costs of phases two and three. Right now, the construction costs are fairly high. Inflation didn't help us at all for that. And so they are doing a lot of value engineering, and we are putting our heads together trying to find ways to reduce the cost of both of these two major components of this pre-treatment project. The options being created are all in an effort to reduce the cost to each of the processors. And then there are going to be separate processor wastewater treatment agreements, or what we call WTAs, which is what we're going to talk about tonight. They will be ready for review soon. We've got some comments back from the processors on the first round. We've edited those, and we need to get those back out for review by them, and we'll bring that back to council. So this is some information related to each of the different phases. So you can see that in phase one, we get, I show the cost there. And I wish I could get rid of, can I move this? Ah, I guess I can. So the parentheses shows who is basically funding each phase of the project. So you can see in phase one, Pasco is covering that cost. We'll probably do, you know, bonds or whatever and have the processors repay that. The winter storage ponds, you may recall, we accepted a, we applied for an ecology loan for 53 million, and we were on the list. That list is not finalized yet, but we anticipate it will be approved soon. And that's a 1.25 interest, percent interest loan. Phase three is the one we're talking about tonight. Phase four is what I mentioned about the farm irrigation upgrades. And then I break out the funding for phase three to show how the phase three project is being funded. And the numbers reflect there, don't quite, they don't add up to the 122 because there's additional costs added into that financial summary at the bottom. And we just recently, as of last week, got approval for the $5 million curb loan. And we are, we have a request into the state legislature right now for an additional 5 million. My hope is that we can also find another federal grant program that this project will fit very nicely with, that we can request up to another 10 million in the effort, again, to help reduce the cost to the processors. Each time we get one of these loans or grants, it reduces the amount of funding necessary from Burnham. So as far as specifically the phase three project, we are 70% design complete on it. Construction is anticipated to begin in February 2023, which is next month. The original startup date for the phase three facility was originally anticipated to be July 2024. However, we recently got notification from Dairy Gold that their project is delayed. They are experiencing a lot of the same supply chain issues that many of us have experienced on many of our other projects. Now, they are working to try to speed that up, same thing as we're doing with, you know, design changes, value engineering, and that kind of stuff. But right now, they're looking about the end of 2024. So we're looking at a potential new startup date around September 2024, which relaxes our schedule a little bit. Hopefully, that relaxation of the schedule will help reduce some of the cost as well. You may recall that we entered into a second work acceleration agreement. Council approved that back in December, and that agreement said we would enter into a WTA with Burnham by January 31st, or we are on the hook to reimburse them their costs through January 31st, up to $3.5 million. Now, we had a first work acceleration agreement, which took us up to two. We have reimbursed them a million and a half for that already. Okay, for the work that they've done so far to get us up to the 70% design that we're working on right now. The processor WTAs, we're looking at probably February and not too far from now to bring those agreements to council for review. So now we're going to get into the wastewater treatment agreement. And previously, I gave a presentation on this. In that presentation, I outlined all the different sections and all the different exhibits that went with it. The current agreement has all the same sections and all the same exhibits, but it's been negotiated between all the attorneys. And I'm going to turn this now over to the esteemed Mr. Steve DeGiulio to talk about the agreement itself and provide additional information to council.
Director Worley, if it's one second here, are we, if you go back one slide, or do we need to, are we talking about needing to another work acceleration agreement? Or is this going to be something that, that we're going to, we'll say, extend administratively in a handshake agreement? Or what, what, can you tell me about that real quick?
Yes, I can.
I know you'd offered to, to talk last week. I was not available, so I, I.
That's okay.
Appreciate that.
And that's going to be the final wrap-up after the discussion about the agreement itself.
Thank you.
Steve Worley, I hope you're not steamed at me. Thank you. Good evening, mayor, members of the council. Nice to be back before you on utility-related matters. I was thinking back as I was coming in today that I start, first started working with Pasco on the annexation of the West Pasco Water System probably two or three decades ago, and I've been working with you on utility issues ever since. I think it's important to remind you where we are in this process because it'll help you understand some of the issues we've been dealing with in the final stages of the contract that Eric stands such a good job with. So we are proceeding as a city under the state's Water Quality Joint Development Act, which is a special piece of legislation to facilitate these somewhat unique and special projects. We've done a number of these projects, but they're still fair, fairly rare. And this is one of the more significant ones that have been done under this authority. You went through the process, basically the first half of the statute, and then you got to the decision to select Burnham. Then you're negotiating with Burnham. And you, as the city's legislative authority, oversees those negotiations, and that's why these constant briefings regarding the contract. On completion of the process, the agreement is forwarded to ecology for review and comment. Then there is a public hearing before you on the agreement. And then only after ecology approval and only after the public hearing would the city have the authority, use the council, to approve this contract. Additionally, you will provide an appeal mechanism in that approval for any aggrieved person to challenge that decision. It's a unique provision of this particular statute. We're trying to figure out whether anybody is really, could be aggrieved by this, but maybe. So you'll have to provide for that, and the council will appoint a board to hear any such appeal. Okay, the statute provides for particular provisions. And subsection eight of RCW 70A 140040 requires that the agreement include a provision and an option for the city to acquire at fair market value the facilities that Burnham will be constructing under this contract. So quite a bit of the discussion over the last approximately month as we got down to this was trying to come up with the definition of fair market value under section 5.5. And you'll see that this is a somewhat detailed description of what is fair market value. Many of the provisions are common to an analysis of fair market value, but it is also unique in tax credit transactions to support the, what I'll call the financing of the project by the private developer in order that the private developer and the financing behind the private developer are not at risk should the city determine to go forward and acquire. So that's why you see the laundry list of elements that goes into the determination of fair market value. In simplest terms, fair market value is the net present value of the cash flow, that is revenue minus expenses. And what's the net present value of that, plus all of the, taking care of the debt that you would expect in such a situation. So that's section 5.5, and we've been going around and around on that. We've still got another tweak or two to address in the event that the city takes the property at the end of the lease term, at the end of the contract term, 30 years, to make sure that depreciation is included in that analysis. But the parties have generally agreed to that already. Ecology will review to ensure consistency with the purposes of particular state laws, particularly the reclaimed water use statute, the statute the legislature enacted that gives strong priority and a statement of public policy in support of water reuse programs. At such time as it comes before you to approve the contract, you will adopt a resolution and a determination that the contract is in the public interest and in the best interest of the community. The contract also provides that the project provide for performance bond or other security by the service provider, which in the judgment of you will sufficiently secure. Or other security by the service provider, which in the judgment of you will sufficiently secure. The performance of the services herein. And I would note that while the city has a substantial interest in assuring that this project works. Um, you can be assured that the lenders and, uh, the, uh, people who issue bonds supportive of this. Are going to be as much or more interested, uh, as you are. Um, so getting to that point about security, one of the sentences that's been added is in three point one A. To provide that the city be named as a loss payee under the performance bond with respect to construction. We have to take that forward and address that with respect to, uh, ongoing, uh, performance bond as well or some security. The. Next issue I wanted to talk about was in section twelve. We made sure, uh, in this most recent draft that we provided for builder's risk insurance. During construction before the project is turned over. I think you're familiar with, uh, the commercial operation date COD, a term that's used throughout the agreement. Just as a reminder, and I think you've probably heard this before in prior briefings, the city doesn't start paying. Until after there's a commercial operations date. So there's a substantial, you know, burden on the developer here to get this thing working and operating because you don't have a burden. To pay for it until it's operational. Other, uh, modifications from prior drafts you've seen is taking, um, certain utility costs, electricity. Uh, excuse me, solid waste disposal, um, excuse me, electricity and natural gas. Utility rates, um, out of a markup since the city's going to be paying those directly in any event. Other issues that, um, are in the final stages of being resolved include. The, um, and this is reflected in exhibit C, the, uh. Strength of the influent water flow that will come from the process. Waste, uh, processors, um, to the PWRF. And there is a need to have sufficient strength in that PWRF waste to generate the. Reaction such as to produce natural, the, um, renewable natural gas. And so that's another issue, just a tweak that remains to be done there. Uh, one of the issues that has come up is the, uh, application of sections. Seven point six with respect to. Liquidated damages. Um, we want to be sure that the city is protected, trying to figure out all the damages that are available. Um, is, uh, difficult, so we do have the, uh, provision for. And this is in six point two A. They will pay a damage, daily damage rate for each day they fail to meet. That, uh, COD date that is committed to in the contract. Is that influenced by the section eleven limitation of liability? And the, uh, my response to that is that the section eleven limitation on liability is a. Uh, limitation that you'll find in many municipal public works contracts. Um, the damages are the damages or in our case liquidated damages. Um, but punitive, speculative, remote, and the other elements that are set forth here. Are not typically found in a public works contract protecting both the owner and the developer in those situations from. Um, inappropriate, um, or extraordinary claims in this situation. One of the issues that I spotted right away when I was first asked, this is probably now six weeks ago to start working on some of the issues here is. Well, how is the city protected? If they don't meet the deadline, how, what's the city gonna do with the process wastewater? Well, you'll see in the contract that the flex that is built in. Such that the city's twelve-month storage capacity. Um, basically expanded winter storage use of the process wastewater. Is built into this contract as, um, a cushion, um, a safeguard for the city. Uh, in the event that they don't get that done. They're still obligated for damages, but the, uh, city is protected with that. Uh, provision in the agreement. So with that in mind, um, the, uh, I guess I can call Steve on this, but. Worley, but the intent is to, um, take whatever comments that you may have tonight. Plus the additional tweaks that we've identified with respect to exhibit C. The fair market value at end of lease term, uh, the, uh, performance security issue. And then bring this back to the council for consideration at a. Send to Ecology, of course, but also bring it back for the public hearing. Get any comments, uh, that the public may have on the form of contract and advance it. Uh, once Ecology approves for final approval. So that's the schedule that we're looking at and. You won't have a date or schedule for that? So as I understand it, that's currently, the public hearing would be scheduled for February sixth council meeting. And I also understand that Burnham representatives may be available as well online. Any questions from the council at this point?
Thank you for the presentation. Um, do we have any questions or comments? Mayor for Timbaloni.
Yeah, just, well, hopefully briefly, um. Is the timeline contingent on Department of Ecology's turnaround?
Yes, I mean, you can't sign the agreement with Burnham until after Ecology's blessing.
And I want to clarify that. We sent a copy of the initial draft of this agreement to Ecology for review. And they have approved it already and I apologize to Mr. DeGiulio for not sharing that information. Um, but there was nothing in the agreement that they saw as problematic. And what they look for is to make sure all of the responsibilities of who does what and who is responsible for what are all included in there. So that if something does go wrong, they know who to go to. And that's all covered. Nothing in the changes that, uh, has happened recently would affect Ecology's approval of this agreement already.
Great, so yes, they have to approve it and yes, they already have, is what I think I heard there. Thank you.
Any other questions from council members? Councilwoman Roach, Councilman Serrano.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, I'm good for it now.
Okay.
None here, Mr. DeGiulio. Thank you for addressing some of the comments that I expressed.
Thank you again for the presentation.
Happy to do so. Nice to be here again.
Now to wrap up, as, uh, some of you may have mentioned, uh, thank you. There was a great, um, I'm, I'm glad that was helpful. To understand, uh, the changes that have been made. So now the idea is to ask the question, where do we go from here? And originally, as, uh, was mentioned previously, the intent was to have both the processor agreements. And the Burnham agreement done at the same time. We don't have that right now and so we have some options. Uh, the first option is to continue with what is currently planned and that is to come back to the council on February sixth. Have the public hearing and do the approval of the agreement. We can do those on the same night if possible. Um, and so that's one option. The second option is to delay the approval of this acceleration agreement. And in order to keep the project moving forward, the idea would be to execute another work acceleration agreement. And what, the term we use in the design and construction field is that in this case, the pencils for the design stay up. We keep moving, keep moving forward. That would commit the city to another reimbursement. Uh, but it would give us more time to work out the details of the processor agreements and this agreement. The, the other option is to delay the Burnham approval, don't do another work acceleration agreement. Pencils down, design and construction stops until we get comfortable with the agreements. And then we pick back up at a time that we're ready. Unfortunately, there will be additional costs associated with picking back up where we left off and restarting the design and the construction of the project. So those are the, the options we have available to us right now. There may be others. If you have an idea, we're open to hearing it. And so with that, that's the end of the presentation and we are here to answer any questions.
Um, actually, um, Mr. Ferguson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, yeah, just to wanted to clarify a little bit, uh, the dance, uh, it may be a little, uh, more intricate than that. Uh, in the sense that, uh, the public hearing would need to be held, that obviously we would notice that and, uh, we could hold that public hearing. But one of the things that you'll have to do in this case, uh, based on the statute is you'll have to make findings. Now, uh, there is, i- is it possible to have a public hearing and be able to make those findings on the same night? You, you, yes, because oftentimes they're pretty generic. I- is it recommended? No. Uh, it would be preferred to hold a public hearing, uh, be able to take any input from the public, uh, if, if, if there is any. Uh, and then be able to have council, uh, be able to have us be able to draft the findings accordingly and be able to come back and adopt the agreement with the findings at the same time. So, uh, that, that's preferred and, and I apologize, I didn't, uh, make that, uh, uh, clear or I think I, I misstated that previously to Mr. Worley. So, um, but yeah, that would be the preferred option, uh, to hold a public hearing. Uh, and then be able to, uh, move forward with, uh, those findings, coming back with those findings from the public hearing and, uh, approval. Assuming that is what the council prefers.
Thank you. Councilman Campos.
Well, uh, I guess, Mr. Ferguson, if I understand right, you want us to hold off on any conversation until we have that. Public hearing and then determine what direction we want to go to or i- am I understanding staff still wants a pulse on? At least for our agreement on what we want to do with our Burnham agreement.
Uh, yes and no. I think, uh, on the one hand, uh, you would, uh, I think it's clear that obviously through this presentation. And this is probably our third or fourth one that we've had on this, so, uh, a- and as Mr. DeGiulio pointed out, uh. This is one of those rare, uh, exceptions where, uh, the legislative body, uh, even though it, it, uh, really relies on staff. Uh, this is truly, uh, a, a decision made by the legislative body and, and is, uh, the legislative body's tasked with, with making these, uh. Unusual findings and, and adopting the agreement. So it is, it is a, a, an unusual process. Uh, so, uh, but oftentimes there are things that can, uh, become, that can come to light at a public hearing. Uh, that would, uh, make council, uh, maybe want to have some other questions to follow up with staff or, uh, go back with a different direction. But I think, I, I think I feel pretty safe in saying that, uh, we're, we're pretty clear that council wants us to come back. Uh, with, uh, an agreement, uh, that, uh, is ready for approval. Um, obviously that hasn't happened yet, but, uh, the public hearing aspect of that, uh, allows there to be some, some due process. Uh, while, while not required in a quasi judicial sense, uh, for due process constitutionally, uh, it does, uh, comply with the statute and. And makes it clear that, uh, council has, uh, done, dot all their i's across their t's.
Understood. Okay then. So then I will, I will try to keep my comment on target then. As it stands right now, understanding just how important this project is. I would be in favor of however we looked at keeping the design process going with Burnham. Whether it's the option A, option B, or some of the option outside of those. Uh, again, if it's incorporating information we get from a public hearing, um, that's, that's the way I'm leaning. Right now as it stands with the information that's been provided.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments, Mayor for Timbaloni?
Yeah, my, my comment will be that, um. My, my biggest concerns about the authorization to, the early authorization for, for work is, was that we're, you know, by drips and drabs. Start spending a lot of money on a very large project. I, I don't think any of us should take lightly the fact that we're talking a hundred and thirty million dollars, uh, long-term for this project. This is a huge investment in the city. Where we're at, where I think we're seeing the progress, um, in terms of where this is at. And so far I'm not hearing anyone raise, um, showstoppers in terms of, well, this is, this is complicated. Well, this is technically difficult work. Um, well, there's cost considerations and such to continue to work through. Um, we're seeing, um, outside agencies see the value and merit in this project as well in terms of, you know, five million dollars of funding does not come lightly. Um, that is, that requires a level of review and, and consideration that is significant, so. Um, I certainly don't want to create a spot where we, we are, um, demobilizing in some fashion and ultimately increasing the cost. Often substantially, um, through that process, so very interested in, in, in holding that, um, um, upcoming, um. Not workshop, but hearing, thank you, on, I believe, the sixth and then, um. If there is no substantive comments, would we ha- would we have draft, um, findings? Um, assuming that there is no new light in, brought in front of us that we could approve. Um, but that if we received new information, then, then we would have a pro- process to delay or is? Mr. Ferguson, is yours recommendation that we do not draft any findings until after we've had that hearing?
Uh, I, that would be my recommendation.
Okay, so it would be inappropriate for us to, um, base it off of the information we already have in front of us. Um, presuming there's no public comment.
It's okay for you to tell me that's the case. No, it is because one of the things that I think that, that, uh, and, and I, my, my experience with this is often in a, uh, moratorium kind of sense. And, and Mr. DeGi- if, uh, Mr. DeGiulio has any, uh, expert knowledge on this, uh, uh, with this particular statute, um, I'm happy to hear it. But, uh, in my experience, uh, with, uh, do, adopting findings and moving forward, um, it's often it. The, the public hearing, one of the things that happens at the public hearing is that council talks. And so that's really what we can use oftentimes to develop those findings. So, uh, but my preference would obviously be to, uh, to not have those pre-drafted, uh, and, and think I know what you're gonna say. But, uh, I, I think I've got a pretty good idea, but, um, I would prefer to be able to do that, uh, in, in a bifurcated process.
Understood.
And for clarification, any money spent now based on the work acceleration agreement. Is credited towards the final cost. I think we mentioned that during the work acceleration agreement proposals that we had previously.
I appreciate that clarification. Um, it's more the magnitude of the overall project and that I would like to be able to push the escape button if we need to. But it gets to a point where every, where everything's aligning and I'm seeing a less and less need for an escape hatch. So, thank you. That was the only point I was making with that. Thank you. Is that enough to provide you some, some clarification and direction? Certainly, um, interested in moving the hearing forward. Um, and I would very much like to not stop work, um, arbitrarily while we wait for the process to go forward.
So am I hearing that another work acceleration agreement, just to keep things going until we get through the public hearing and the finding of facts? And the approval of the final agreement?
Is that what you need from us to continue to make sure that we're, because you said pencils down versus pencils up. What do we do to keep pencils up?
Keep pencils up? We are, under the work acceleration agreement. I, it was identified to have a wastewater treatment agreement executed by January thirty-first.
Correct.
Even February sixth for the next council meeting is beyond that date. So technically there's no commitment by the city at that point to keep things going without either the WTA agreement signed. Or another work acceleration agreement to reimburse Burnham for any work done until we get the final agreement signed.
So you're saying pencils are gonna go down no matter what? He, he gave me an option with pencils up, so I'm just, I'm trying to understand.
No, I'm saying that if we, if we do the hearing and delay the final approval. Things could stop.
Yeah, and we don't have any more council meetings until February.
Well, I think if we did it on February sixth, Burnham might give us a little bit of slack.
Mr. Ferguson?
Uh, so it's, it's a pretty simple amendment that we can come back on the sixth. Uh, that would be something that, uh, Mr. Worley and I would, uh, negotiate with, uh, the Burnham representatives. Uh, and then if, uh, as, as you stated, you know, the sixth is obviously after the fir- or thirty-first anyway, so. Uh, uh, you know, as long as we're progressing, I don't think it's gonna be an issue, but, uh, if Mr. Worley does, that's, that's, uh, obviously, uh. Up to him as well as he's been.
Yeah, thi- this is Chris Tynan from Burnham. If the, if the council is going to approve and sign the contract on February sixth. I'm confident that we can figure out a way with Steve, um, to keep things moving. Obviously, we have a pretty big payment due in February we get to deal with, but, um, we can work between now and then with Steve and our contractors. Um, you know, as long as everything's done on the sixth.
Um, Chris, if, if we have to do a public hearing on the sixth and then wait till the next regular meeting. Which is two weeks later.
That's correct.
That puts us at the twentieth. Are you still comfortable with us moving? Are you still comfortable with us moving forward that way?
I, I think if we were not going to sign until the twentieth, it would probably behoove us to do another work acceleration agreement to make sure we could get the amount of dollars that we would need for February. But I think you, you and I can work it out and maybe on the sixth, then we would, we would approve that to keep that moving.
Okay.
All right, I will just take.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we could, we could come up with the total, total dollar amount. The, I believe the amount of dollars that we do in February to our contractors, about two million dollars. That's to purchase, put deposits on long lead time equipment, such as the nitrogen system, the, the grit removal system, some of the flares, other, other pieces. So we could try to negotiate some of that down, but that's where we're at today.
I will say, as a council member, my only, my, my point was just that I would like work not to stop when we get through this process if we look like it's going to be a February sort of process. So whatever we can do to get there and Mr. Worley, I'll, I'll, I'll look forward to your guidance in between and then more specifically on the sixth, on how, how we make that happen.
Okay.
That would be slightly different in tone than I've had in the past. I want to be clear on that point. Thank you.
I'm hearing you clearly. Is that the consensus from?
Is there any further questions or comments? Councilwoman Roach or Councilmember Serrano?
Yeah, I'll, I'll agree with Councilman Maloney's position that we need not stop this. You know, I mean, we've invested a lot, Burnham's invested a lot. We need to continually move it forward. We've got to kind of get, stopgap this to get at least the February twentieth. Let's get that there and then continue the process rolling.
Perfect. Thank you for that. Any other comments? Seeing none, I think the general nodding on the head is yes, let's keep the work going until we hear back.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for that. And we're almost there. D. Ordinance twenty twenty-three revenue bond LID number one fifty-one debt service. And we have Director Buckley.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. The item before you tonight is related to, it's really the final step in LID, our local improvement district number one fifty-one, which is the Northwest Sewer LID. All the construction work has been completed and a final assessment amount determined. We sent notices to the assessments, or the individuals that own the property that have been given an assessment, that provided them a third day interest free period that ended November sixteenth of twenty twenty-two. We did receive some payments, but not a lot, only about three thousand dollars, or three thousand two hundred and twenty-six dollars. So there's a remaining unpaid assessment amount. At this point in time, we want to use city funds to issue a bond and support that financing through inter fund loan from the Equipment Replacement Fund. What that will do is it provides a lower cost to financing because we don't have to go through external financing and it's easy and quick. And it also provides a better investment rate for the Equipment Replacement Fund to earn a little extra money on their, their fund balance. And so we'll come back to you next council meeting to ask for approval of an inter fund loan and finalize this LID. And then we can get it set up and, and just start the process and be done coming to council for requests on this LID. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you. We have a light out for Mr. Brown. Councilmember Brown.
Just really quick, thank you. On those, we did receive some payments, but on those open balances, what, what is that looking like?
It's, the, the amount is three million, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and ninety-eight dollars.
And the plan to recoup that is?
What we do is we set up a fifteen-year repayment period and, and send a bill out every year until the, the LID assessments are paid off. And right now, this is a, there's not a lot of development that has happened here. So it's, you will have opportunity and I would expect that we will come back in the future with subdivisions in this area where we split the assessments up from a few large assessments to many smaller assessments.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Councilwoman Roach or Councilmember Serrano?
No questions at this time, Mayor.
Thank you.
Nothing here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we're not exactly done. Item six, miscellaneous discussion. We do have miscellaneous discussion from Councilmember Campos.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just briefly, as I'm looking at our reminders, it's my understanding that Tuesday, January twenty-fourth, the Hapo Track Advisory Board Meeting is not going to be happening. Is that correct, City Manager Lincoln?
That was what I was informed by the, the county.
Got it. Ten-fourth, thank you. And so it sounds like the earliest we may revise that. There's something going to be happening the thirty-first, I believe, and then.
Yeah, on the thirty-first, there'll be a meeting between my staff and, and the interim county administrator staff to talk about the Hapo facility.
Any further comment?
Just, just that, I just want to thank you for trying to track that down. I think it's really important that we get those up and running as soon as reasonably possible. But I understand that it, it's a partnership. We, we can only do so much and I just want to continually echo that, you know, I think myself, and I, I can't speak for Mayor Proton Maloney, but we're genuinely interested. We've got volunteers who are appointed to this and I think we're doing our lion's share of what we're supposed to be able to and we're ready to engage and get in there. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, I just wanted to add a thank you for your support of the staff and, and those of you that could attend and that sent your condolences for being unable to attend the, the awards banquet. It's always a nice way to kind of celebrate together and, and to acknowledge those that have accomplished really good things for the city. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Proton Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor. So with the school district coming and talking to us today, it, it did remind me of one of our privileges as council is that we can choose to, if we, if we see so fit, to support by resolution items on a ballot such as a, such as the upcoming bond. So I just wanted to present it out to my fellow council members of, are we interested in potentially moving forward on a resolution that would, in support of that bond, that we could consider at our February sixth meeting? I'm, I'm, I'm interested. I've, I still have more I want to know about that particular, the, the, the bond. I've learned some. I appreciate especially the, the special high school, I guess, that they're, that they're working, that they're working or proposing. I think that really fits the, the need for some of our non-traditional career paths. You know, technical schools are really important and having kids be able to walk away from high school and have certifications and such is, it seems really important. Anyways, I'd be interested in understanding whether my fellow council members would be interested in supporting a, a resolution like that or even supporting that even having staff look at writing such a resolution. So I guess I'd love some discussion on the group about that.
Councilman Campos.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think from my standpoint, I wouldn't be against or opposed supporting a resolution. But I think that for me before, I would give a commitment is that I'd like the school board to give a presentation on what that bond entails before they add my support, which essentially would mean, and I think the ask would be for staff to come with a resolution ready. But I don't know that I really want to task staff with that. There's a lot that we're doing right now. So I kind of, I guess I, I would, I'm indifferent, but I think it would probably behoove us to get that information first before we threw out our support. And, and it sounds as if we had Superintendent give the go-ahead that she'd be willing to do that. So we might want to invite her back is all.
And I do want to clarify, I was not asking for anyone's support at this time on the bond measure of whether just simply to ask staff to look into it further. So I certainly was not asking for anyone's vote of support or opposition on the bond itself.
Madam Mayor, if I'm, if I may, I'd like to follow on what Councilman Campos said. I think I, I'd like to express the concern of, we've got a staff that's well worked. Taking time to determine whether or not we support a position of bonding from another public entity seems to be the not most prudent use of staff's time and our resources. So I, I would not be in favor of doing that.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Roach, any comments?
Um, you know, I, I would probably just defer to what the majority of council, I don't feel strongly one way or another on the topic. I think the information is out there and, you know, this is something I obviously support in my personal life as a parent, but I feel like the burden's on the school district to provide that sort of informational campaign to the community. So I'd like to hear what other council members feel on this.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Brown?
Just real quick, I think we're all saying the same thing, just slightly different. I'm not in favor of taxing the staff at this particular time. I would like to see a good presentation and a great clarification of this bond and then retrieve any assistance or help from the city at that point. I think there's enough work allocated that is urgent and very much on priority status right now. No disrespect to the bond, but we have a lot on our plate right now. And this, I think the staff is, is, my perception is a heavenly task right now. Although education and relationships with that is very important, but if we were to prioritize it, the burden is on them to present to us. And if some meat is on the bone, then we can again ask staff to move forward and present back to us. Thank you.
Councilman Maloney?
I'd just like to say that Councilman Brown articulated it well and I agree with him and Campos on this. Well, then I'm, yeah, just, I agree with everything you said, so.
Okay, so it sounds like.
Did I, did I hear that we want to set up a opportunity for the superintendent to come speak to us on the, on the upcoming meeting? I'm, I'm, I'm okay with, with that direction, staff, because council's going, I'm not trying to prompt and push any direction. I just want to understand.
It sounds from every, the comments that I heard mostly was saying to hear back from. Does anyone need to make a comment online?
Oh, that's, that's probably me. I apologize. Yeah, you know, I'm not in favor of that.
Okay. All right, so Councilman Campos.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I think that what the majority of council is saying is that it's up to the school, the school's responsibility to come and convey information if they would like to. I don't think that we're asking for them back. If they choose to do that, that's great. But I think Councilwoman Roach hit the nail on the head and I think everyone here has echoed it. They bear the burden of the responsibility of getting that information out. I don't think any of us, we're not opposed to hearing that information, but, but I don't think that we're asking for them to come back. We would be open to it, but that's not an ask of ours. So that's where I would clarify that.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
All right. The majority has spoken.
And I want to say I really appreciate the discussion.
Okay, great. Thank you again, everyone, for giving your input. And we're not done yet. We do have a need for an executive session. Sorry, Chief. We do have a need for executive session. City Council will now meet in executive session to discuss consideration of a minimum offering price for sale or lease of real estate if there's a likelihood. That disclosure would decrease the price per RCW forty-two point three zero point one one zero LC. Factors one. I'm trying to read the notes. Neighborhood impacts and two, future use of property. And J, discussion of legal counsel, with legal counsel about current or potential litigation per RCW forty-two point three zero point one one zero LI for fifteen minutes to return at ten o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It is ten oh one and we do have need to extend our executive session for another fifteen minutes to return at ten sixteen. Thank you.
It is ten sixteen and we do have need for extension of five more minutes for the executive session to return at ten twenty one. Thank you.
Thank you.
It is 10:16 and we do have need for extension of five more minutes for the executive session to return at 10:21. Thank you.
It is 10:30 and this meeting is officially adjourned. Thank you everyone for staying this late.